Can you folks hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Teague, would you call the roll, please?
Hal Glanville.
Here.
J.R. Huddleston.
Here.
Deborah Johnston.
Bill Lukens.
Here.
Travis Orbach. Larry Pratt.
Here.
Gary Telkamp.
Here.
Linda Varvel.
Here.
Thank you.
Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance? My pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our usual reminder, council, if you have any conflicts of interest, please let the rest of the council know before you vote. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. And can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the April 22nd council meeting?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the April 22nd council meeting.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. And can I get a motion to approve the bills in between?
Make a motion to approve the bills in between for $182,690.41.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. And I get a motion to approve the current claims.
Make a motion to approve the current claims, $219,322.06.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. And a motion to approve the Wells Fargo credit card claims.
I make a motion to approve the Wells Fargo credit claim, credit card claims, in the amount of $7,669.09.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Communications from the public, is there anyone that would like to address the council tonight?
Good evening. Good evening. Is that working? Can you hear that?
Yeah.
Okay, good. I can't.
It's good when it's close.
But I'm pretty deaf.
There you go.
And blind. I have a few questions, if I may.
If I may? Can you give us your name and address, please?
Yes. First name's Bob, last name is Statum, S-T-A-T-H-A-M, 1446 Catholican Avenue, Hot Springs. I have a few questions about the dispensary situation that we're discussing. Is that going to be discussed tonight or voted on or something? Is that correct? Now, I'm going off information, I hate to say because I wasn't here at the last meeting. So I'm going off information from the newspaper, so I hope Brett got things okay for what my presumptions are. So Lynn's Dakota Mart Pharmacy Hours, do they need to be, do they need to come to you to change their hours, or is this a dispensary thing only?
Dispensary only.
Is that written into their laws?
State law.
State law, okay. So the farm, the legal pharmacy, isn't covered by that?
Correct.
Wow. Okay. Not your job. So you didn't do that, right? So do we think we should ask Lynn's Dakota Mart Pharmacy to expand their hours? Because if the dispensary needs more hours, shouldn't the people who need other drugs, prescription drugs? Does that make any sense? Just asking. Okay. One of the items in the newspaper was helping the local dispensary business be more competitive with other dispensaries outside of the area. Did they give us good reason, or you folks, why their hours that are limited to now aren't good enough for their business? Do we have any answers to that?
What they provided was that they felt that they needed to expand the hours to be competitive with other dispensaries around the area.
I'll talk to Lynn's Dakota Mart tomorrow and see if they need to step up, because I would imagine they're busy all day long, and they seem to close it, the hours are dedicated. Okay. So, competitive, okay. So the other item was the license renewal, apparently eliminating the $5,000 fee. Is that correct?
No.
No. Well, that was how it was reported.
We're removing it from ordinance. It's staying the same amount for this year, but doing that allows us to change it by resolution, which is much easier than in ordinance. There's no plans to eliminate the fee.
Okay. I think that's the word that he used in the newspaper, if I'm not mistaken, because I don't know how to spell that word. Just kidding. Well, that's a good, because I was gonna call my bank tomorrow and stop payment on my tax check and see if you guys could give me a little adjustment on my tax for that. Is that possible? Probably not. Okay. So those are my points. I don't know why we're expanding their hours. Has anybody else in town asked to have their hours expanded? How many places stay open 12 hours a day, seven days a week, shy of a gas station, a grocery store, which they probably don't even? If I need to get a registered check, I go to my bank. Guess what? They don't open until nine, they close at four. I gotta get there in those hours.
Mm-hmm.
I can take care of business. Why can't people needing prescription drugs? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move on to our proclamations. We have a number of them tonight. The first proclamation is an executive proclamation, State of South Dakota Office of the Governor. Whereas the United States of America owes a profound debt of gratitude to the brave men and women of our armed forces who have selflessly served and continue to serve our nation with honor, courage, and commitment. And whereas, May has been designated as Military Appreciation Month, a time to recognize and celebrate the sacrifices and contributions of active-duty service members, veterans, and their families in safeguarding the freedoms and values we hold dear. And whereas, throughout history, members of the Army, Navy, Air Force, Marine Corps, Coast Guard, Space Force, and National Guard have defended our country at home and abroad, often at great personal cost. And whereas, during this month, we also observe important commemorative days, including Loyalty Day, Victory in Europe, VF Day, Military Spouse Appreciation Day, Armed Forces Day, and Memorial Day, and all of which underscore the diverse roles and lasting impact of military service. And whereas, it is fitting and proper to honor the resilience, dedication, and unwavering patriotism of those who wear the uniform and express our collective appreciation for their service and sacrifice. Now therefore, I, Larry Roden, Governor of the State of South Dakota, do hereby proclaim May 2025 Military Appreciation Month in South Dakota and encourage all citizens to recognize, support, and honor the courage and commitment of our military personnel and their families, not only during this month, but also throughout the year. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause to be affixed the great seal of the State of South Dakota in Pierre, the capital city, this 24th day of April in the year of our Lord 2025. I would echo the governor's sentiments on that particular proclamation. Our next proclamation is National Poppy Day. Whereas, America is the land of freedom, preserved and protected willingly and freely by citizen soldiers. And whereas, millions who have answered the call to arms have died on the field of battle. And whereas, a nation at peace must be reminded of the price of war and the debt owed to those who have died in war. And whereas, the red poppy has been designated as a symbol of sacrifice of lives in all wars. And whereas, the American Legion Auxiliary has pledged to remind America annually of this debt through the distribution of the memorial flower. Now therefore, I, Mayor Bob Nelson, do hereby proclaim the 23rd day of May 2025 as National Poppy Day and ask that all citizens pay tribute to those who have made the ultimate sacrifice in the name of freedom by wearing the memorial poppy on this day. In testimony whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Hot Springs to be affixed this 5th day of May in the year of our Lord 2025. And our last proclamation is the National Water Safety Month. Executive proclamation, the State of South Dakota Office of the Governor. Whereas, swimming and other water-related activities can contribute to good physical and mental health, as well as enhance quality of life. And whereas, water safety education plays an essential role in preventing drownings and recreational aquatic injuries. And whereas, the recreational water industry makes contributions to develop safe swimming facilities, aquatic programs, home pools, and spas and related activities. These opportunities can contribute to a higher quality of life in our community. And whereas, the pool, spa, water park, and recreation and park industries are making ongoing efforts to educate the public on pool and spa safety issues and initiatives. And whereas, it is vitally important to communicate water safety rules and programs to families and individuals of all ages, whether they are owners of private pools, users of public swimming facilities, or visitors to water parks. Now therefore, I, Larry Roden, Governor of the State of South Dakota, do hereby proclaim May 2025 as Water Safety Month in South Dakota. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause to be affixed the great seal of the State of South Dakota in Pierre, the capital city, this 13th day of April in the year of our Lord 2025. Still have a couple of minutes before our public hearing. Why don't we go ahead and can I get a motion to approve personnel actions A through I?
Make a motion to approve personnel actions, item A through I.
Second.
Linda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Let's go ahead and jump ahead to our resolution. Can I get a motion to approve Resolution 2025-10?
I make a motion to approve the second reading ordinance.
No, no.
Resolution.
Oh, resolution, apologies. I make a motion to accept the 2025-10 resolution to appoint election board.
Second.
Is that it?
That's the right one, yeah. I think, is that the right one?
Yes.
Finally.
Yep. Discussion. We still need to cover about 30 minutes, or 30 seconds. Anybody? Questions?
I would thank the people who volunteer in our community. I often hear on election training calls, the struggles communities have. It's a long day, and it's a very serious work. And we're very lucky in our community that we have a good number of people willing to step up and do it. So I would like to thank those who chose to be on our election board this year.
And not only do they do a good job, but they're personable when you come through. They treat you nice, they answer any questions you could have, and just wonderful group of people.
So Superintendent Miriam Martin, Clerk Barbara Engelbrecht, Clerk Ron Engelbrecht, and we have an alternate in Karen Muller, they've all served before, so.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. As we come back to our 7:15 public hearing, tacked on the license applications from the Hot Springs Chamber of Commerce for six special sale alcoholic beverage licenses for the Wine Walk event on May 23rd, 2025, at the following locations. Hot Springs Makers Market, 108 South Chicago Street. Changing Seasons, 323 South Chicago Street. Second Chances, 321 North River Street. Chautauqua Artisans Market, 501 North River Street. Scobee Kombucha, 713 North River Street. Is there anybody here from the public that would like to speak to that? Josh, do you have anything you'd like to update or share with the council?
Just to let you know, it'll be run very similar to years past. We'll be IDing to make sure everyone's over 21. Each participating business on this special license will get a list of instructions. Let's see, amount to pour an ounce and a half. Consumption has to be inside the building. You know, almost identical to what we have been doing the last few years. So really no changes on our end from the chamber's perspective.
All right. You've been good enough to introduce the new chamber director to City Hall.
I would love to.
Would you like to address to the rest of the council and the public?
Yeah, absolutely. With us here tonight is Amber Sierra. She is taking over for me here. She has taken over for me. I'm blocked out of email and everything now. Amber comes to us with a MBA and a master's in social work. She's doing an excellent job catching on very quickly. We'll be moving to Hot Springs here in the next 30 days or so, I suppose. And we're very lucky and fortunate to have her. She's picking up, and she's gonna do a great job. On my behalf, I thank council and Misty for working with me all these years, or all these months.
All these years.
I should say months. Months, I'm sorry. It's been a pleasure. I thoroughly enjoyed it. And if not for moving closer to some aging parents, I would, I'd still be going strong. So it's been a pleasure to work for Hot Springs.
Thank you. Council, any questions? Okay. Welcome, Amber. Anyone from the public? Any comments? All right. Why don't we go ahead and close the public hearing at 7:18 then? I need a motion to either approve, deny, or postpone the license applications from the Hot Springs Chamber of Commerce.
Make a motion to approve the license applications from the City of Hot Springs Chamber of Commerce for six special sale alcohol beverage licenses for the Wine Walk event on 5/23/25 at the following locations. Hot Springs Makers Market, 108 South Chicago Street. Changing Seasons, 323 South Chicago Street. Second Chances, 321 North River Street. Chautauqua Artisans Market, 501 North River Street. Scobee Kombucha, 713 North River Street.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We have a number of ordinances tonight. Can I get a motion to approve the second reading of Ordinance 1263?
Make a motion to approve the second reading of Ordinance 1263 and ordinance revising Title 15 Land Usage, Chapter 155 Zoning Code, 155.058 Cannabis Dispensaries.
Misty, would you call the roll, please?
Gary Telkamp.
Yes.
Bill Lukens.
Yes.
Hal Glanville.
Yes.
Larry Pratt.
Yes.
Linda Varvel.
Yes.
J.R. Huddleston.
Yes.
Thank you.
The motion passes. Can I get a motion for our second ordinance for tonight, the second reading of Ordinance
I make a motion to approve the second reading ordinance of 1264 and ordinance revising, what is that, title?
Six.
Six. Business Regulations, Chapter 116 Cannabis Establishment, 116 dot 04 dash 116 dot 08 and 116 dot 14.
It's 11.
It's 11, yeah.
Thank you. We're not good with Roman numerals.
Title 11. 11, okay.
Thanks, well.
Thank you.
Second.
I'm sorry, was that Bill? Oh, Larry.
Larry.
Okay, thank you. Sorry.
Ms. Teague, would you call the roll, please?
Bill Lukens.
Yes.
Hal Glanville.
Yes.
Larry Pratt.
Yes.
Gary Telkamp.
Yes.
Linda Varvel.
Yes.
J.R. Huddleston.
Yes.
Thank you.
The motion passes. And our final ordinance for tonight, can I get a motion to approve the first reading of Ordinance 1266?
Make a motion to approve the first reading of Ordinance 1266 and ordinance revising Title 11 Business Regulations, Chapter 110 Licenses, Paragraph 110.18 License Fees and Issuance.
Ms. Teague, would you call the roll, please?
Hal Glanville.
Yes.
Larry Pratt.
Yes.
Gary Telkamp.
Yes.
Linda Varvel.
Yes.
Bill Lukens.
Yes.
J.R. Huddleston.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Onto new business. Can I get a motion to approve new business, item A, review and approve the 2024 annual report for the City of Hot Springs?
Make a motion to review and approve the 2024 annual report for the City of Hot Springs as presented by finance officer, finance officer period, there's no dot there.
Second.
Sorry.
Discussion. Ms. Teague, would you like to start us off on anything?
You know, I'm probably not gonna take the time to read through the six pages of highlights in the annual review. I would point out a few things. You know, it was a big year for construction for the city. We were prepared in some ways and surprised in some ways for the costs related to that construction. Many of our funds saw a year-to-date loss. We were a little over $1.9 million in all funds of the city. The annual report format that you see with all the numbers in it is prescribed by the Department of Legislative Audit. All communities need to squeeze their figures into that. And it is visible on that report, the decreases in fund balances, but it doesn't tell the story. So that's why I like to take the time to prepare the highlights and provide you with the financial reports, including all the GL balances at year-end. If anyone has any questions in reviewing all these numbers, or after you read through the highlights, I encourage you to ask them. I'm just trying to cover the things that I think are important and I remembered while doing these financials, so I certainly wouldn't want to leave anything out. And I thank those of you that helped me to make sure that I get my notes on what's going on in the future correct as well. Our cash balance decreased a little over $2.7 million for the year. Our general fund cash balances decreased by $2.4 million. But we increased in our assets and we got some big projects done, so we have a lot to be thankful for. I also listed donations the city has received, the projects we've been able to accomplish, and the cost of those projects in those notes. So I do encourage you to take the time to read through them, but I won't take the time tonight to read through each of those for you.
Counsel, any questions for Misty? Good job, Misty.
Thank you.
Just one comment, I think it's appropriate, and I'll look at Misty and she can correct me if I'm wrong, is on the decrease we saw in the general fund, we used $1 million to pay off, we used $1 million from the general fund and $590,000-ish from the 212 to pay for the suspended sidewalk instead of borrowing the money from the state at, what, 1%?
1.9%.
For 10 years. So that was a discussion that council had, that we would rather use cash that we had as opposed to saddling future councils with an annual debt that we weren't sure about, because we also had that discussion, I think, before the election, when that one initiated measure was on the board. So it went down, but it wasn't because we frivolously spent money. We spent $1 million to pay off the debt of the sidewalk. Also for the streets, we spent $251,000 on a front-end loader. The best way to do that was to pay cash instead of incurring more debt. So to me, it felt like prudent management of funds, being good stewards of the taxpayers' dollars, so I just wanted to throw that out.
Thanks. And I would add that it's really important, one of the reasons we did that is because we didn't have a revenue source to pay those loan payments. And so that might have been easier and made your financials look better this year, but future councils then would have to figure out how to pay for that without any new revenue. So that was the right choice, and thank you for pointing that out, it's a big reason that both of those two funds showed losses.
That's kind of one thing I want to point out, too. This council has always looked to the future to make sure that we're not leaving something for somebody else to clean up. So, yeah.
Anyone else? So I've got some highlighted things here, Misty, that are along the same lines as what Bill was just talking about, is that looking at the 101 general fund, the net loss there, but the suspended sidewalk, as Bill talked about, was in there. So that's a one-time hit that, you know, we won't be looking at next year. Questions as much as a statement, just making sure I'm understanding them correctly. And then in the 212 fund, we also talk about the historic lights, the new downtown, that was $348,000 for those. Council had approved that purchase when back in 2016, '17?
Yeah.
Somewhere there. So we knew that bill was gonna be coming due once the project was done. So that's a significant contributor to that particular fund being in the red. And some of the money, as Bill talked about, was for the suspended sidewalk there. The 501 Capital Improvement Fund ended up in the hole, but again, the suspended sidewalk was there. And then some good notes. The water fund and the wastewater fund took a big hit during construction, but looking at the 602 water fund, it ended up with a net gain of $254,000 for the year, so we're...
Yeah, that's largely due to their capitalized assets, because that infrastructure we've been putting in the ground for the last couple of years was able to be removed from the expenses. That was over $420,000 in the water fund. So both the water and wastewater fund would have a net loss if it weren't for being able to capitalize the expenses related to those infrastructure projects and large expenses.
Okay. And then your other highlights certainly capped a lot of the good things that the city's been working on. I appreciate you pointing those out for us. Thank you.
It's not all we've been doing.
No, we got a lot done.
Anyone else?
I just want to say thanks for keeping us in tune as to what was going on all the time. You never let us go meeting to meeting without informing us well as to how things are going with our finances. And that's important for us, because again, what we said, we don't want to leave it to somebody else if and when we're voted out or not voted in. But I just want to say thanks on behalf of the council.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms.
Thank you, Misty. Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Our second new business, item B, can I get a motion to schedule a 2024 Full Audit Readout and Discussion on Monday, May 19th at 6:30 PM?
Make a motion to schedule 2024 Full Audit Readout and Discussion on Monday, May 19th at 6:30 PM before the regular scheduled council meeting.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Can I get a motion on new business item C, approve an agreement with Advanced Engineering and Environmental Services LLC?
Make a motion to approve agreement with Advanced Engineering and Environmental Services LLC, AE2S, for professional services engineering in connection with developing a wastewater treatment plan, facility plan, at a cost not to exceed $58,000.
Second.
Discussion.
Do we not have one?
A plan?
Already, like a wastewater treatment plant, facility plan? Isn't that one of our wastewater requirements when they do those annual inspections? Or is this something different?
So if I'm understanding your question correctly, that would be an operational plan?
Okay.
This is a study to take a look at what's necessary to upgrade the facility to replace failing infrastructure.
And are engineers not capable of that?
No.
No.
He's not satisfied that he can take that on.
Okay.
So this is just a study to tell us, in their opinion, what they feel needs to be addressed with the wastewater treatment plant, and then it'll be up to counsel to decide whether they want to, I don't know, take those recommendations.
Will this help us get grant money or anything?
Yes.
That's part of the deliverable will be if you decide to do this, here are financing options, grants, loans, et cetera, so yes.
Thank you. We talk about cash balances in that fund because everything's so expensive in the water and wastewater funds, and this is a good example, just for a plan, $58,000.
It's, this isn't going to be a five-page plan, this is essentially a, would probably be as complex as at least a preliminary design and proposal. So, yeah, this is a big deal.
Good.
A lot of engineering hours.
Well, I'm glad you could help us with some funding for some of the things we might find in the plan.
Yep. Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Can I get a motion on new business item D, set a public hearing on May 19th at 7:20 PM?
I make a motion to set a public hearing on May 19th at 7:20 PM to act on the on, off, sale, retail, malt beverage, and South Dakota Farm Wine License Application from Hanging J LLC, doing business as Red Rock Resort, to be used at 603 North River Street.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Can I get a motion on new business item E, review and approve the one-year School Resource Officer Program Agreement?
I make a motion to review and approve the one-year School Resource Officer Program Agreement with the Hot Springs School District for the 2025-2026 school year.
Second. Discussion. I'd like to start out by saying that this is going to be an education moment for me in that counsel. You have a memo that I prepared for you that has some calculations on it that I use to help me understand what the actual cost of having a school resource officer up in the school is. I've had this conversation with two people whom I respect, often go to for good insight and to help me understand what I think I understand. In both cases, they were very kind in saying, "You don't get it." So I'm giving the rest of you an opportunity to help me with these numbers and see where I'm completely out in left field. But again, to try to understand what the cost to have that officer in the school are. I looked at it from the standpoint of, we don't have the program, we don't have a school resource officer. And the school approaches us and says, "We think, you know, it would be a good idea to have a school resource officer in the school. We would like to hire one of your police officers to provide that service for us. So what would you charge us for that service?" So in my mind, I needed to understand what that officer costs us per hour to figure out what the right cost would be. Currently, the officer is $30.86 an hour, scheduled to work 2,080 hours a year, so the base salary for that officer would be $64,188.80, just base salary. So then I used that information to calculate what the benefits would be for that position. So breaking down, you can see the Social Security, Medicare, South Dakota Retirement System, the health insurance. Health insurance is the 12 months times the 933, and workman's compensation, reemployment. So when you add all of those into the base salary, the base wages and benefits for that position is $84,717.38. So then I took the number of hours worked, 2,080 hours, divided that into the $84,000, and wages and benefits comes up to $40.73 an hour, is what it costs the city to have that individual on staff, whether they're patrolling strictly for the city or a combination of for the city and for the school. So then the hours requested by the school is 40 hours a week, that's in the contract that you're going to be asked to vote on, four times a month, times nine months, comes up to 1,680 hours. So then take that $40.73 times 1,680 hours, and you can see the cost that it would be to have that officer in the school system. The school is offering us $46,305. We've talked a lot about a percentage of what we think the school should be paying for that particular position, and you can see what that percentage would be if you accept the cost, the contribution that the city, the school is willing to put towards that position. So that's how I arrived at those numbers. If I'm out in left field, I'm pleading with you, help me understand what I'm missing here, because I just don't get it if I'm missing it. The other things that we have talked about that are important to this discussion, and it's in the contract, the red is the suggested changes, the highlighted changes, talked about the supervision of the position, there's some concern about should the school resource, or the school superintendent be providing supervision for a city employee, and also talked about the hours, the amount that the school is willing to offer, should the hours themselves be reduced to be reflective of the contribution that the city, the school is willing to contribute? So I have one other thing that I'd like to remind counsel of, before we ask Chief Norton to come up and give us his opinion on the position, his opinion on supervision, and his opinion on the hours. But I would like to remind the counsel that we have talked before that I see that we're in a similar situation in how we deal with the school and how the county wants to work with us when it comes to dispatch services. If we say to the school, based on your contribution, here's what you're going to get, here's all the hours that we feel that that amount deserves, we're setting a precedence when we get into our discussions with the county. We know that the county wants more from us when it comes to dispatch, so if we say to the school, "Nope, it's either our way or the highway," how do we ask the county to understand that we're offering them what we feel we can afford for dispatch services? And I think we'd be setting a precedence if we do that in the decision that's made tonight. So with that, I'd like Chief Norton to come up and give us his opinion of the contract, focusing on supervision, that has been a part of the conversation, the hours worked, and are you satisfied with the way the current contract is working and the particular contract going forward?
So do you want me to start, or you guys want to ask me questions, I guess?
Just, I'd like you to go ahead and give them your opinion on it, and then give them, you know, a time to ask you questions based on what I've shared and what you're going to share with them.
So my opinion on the matter is, I'll just give you guys some stats here. As of this morning, Thomas, our school resource officer, has been involved in 404 calls for service at the school, that's from the start of school till May 5th. 112 of those calls, he has self-generated, meaning he's been out patrolling, stopping cars in the school zone, so I want to take those out of consideration. So 292 calls for service have been generated at that school, not by him, those are calls he's responded to in the school, being a part of the school resource officer program. 292 calls that whether we have an SRO or not, the Hot Springs Police Department is going to respond to. That's the, that's the big thing for me that I want you guys to realize, is whether we get $46,000 or not, 292 calls, the police department has to respond to. They're still within our municipality, they're still our responsibility, so why would we not accept revenue from the school for a position that's going to take 300 calls? On top of that, added benefits of continuity, Thomas has gone to training, he's been certified in a ton of different aspects that I don't want to speak to because I don't know him as well as he does, but we're paying to send him to training to learn juvenile case law. He's very well-versed in all of these things that I don't want to lose by sending a regular patrol officer up there, you know what I mean? Myself, Captain, one of our patrol officers, let's have the guy who's trained and well-tuned and has rapport with the school, with the administrators, and knows how to handle these specific cases. He's also a DARE instructor, that's a note that I have here, the only one on our staff, you know, he certifies every fifth grader in the school every year, teaches them about the effects of alcohol and drugs, and we do a graduation ceremony, and like, these are things that he specifically brings to the table as the school resource officer, that, you know, I understand that we're in a deficit, I understand that the school's in a deficit, I can't speak to their budget, but, you know, it's been well-notated that, you know, they've got some, some things to consider coming up here, and they still see such value in the program that they're willing to give us $46,305. So it's obviously an emphasis for them to maintain the SRO program. As far as the supervision is concerned, obviously he's a city employee, but he's up there in the school dealing with school events, school staff, or not staff, sorry, but being a part of the school staff, dealing with juveniles, and I absolutely think it's appropriate that the superintendent and him work together in conjunction with everything that they're doing at the school, just like he works with us when he's, you know, in a patrol aspect with the city. I don't see any conflicts there, I think it's absolutely appropriate that he answers to both of us in that capacity. When I say both of us, I mean the city and the school. So I don't see any issues with that, and I support that decision that he works with Dr. Combo, the superintendent, and the city itself.
Reduction in hours, does that make sense?
I don't think so. I think, I mean, I think the stats speak for themselves as far as the call volume, whether it's him, or me, or another patrol officer, one of the eight of us is going to be up there for 35 to 40 hours a week handling the business that takes, you know, that is needed at the school. I think if you say, "We're going to give you 20 hours of service because that's what you pay for," in, you know, in our opinion, we're still, we're going to be up there for 20 more hours for free, if that makes sense. I don't think a reduction in time is necessary, I think we take the 46,305 and we discuss it again in '26 for the, for the next year.
Chief, one question, if I may. You know, there's been the discussion on the supervision. If I'm remembering correctly, the program has, and when I say the program, I'm probably referring to the SRO himself, there have been some, have there been some struggles in the past with multiple points of contact, with one principal saying, "Well, you should be here, and why didn't you tell me this," and, and on and on? And so it seems to me that by putting the superintendent as co-supervisor and a single point of contact, that that cleans up a lot of those struggles that maybe we went through in the early years.
Yeah, I would agree, I mean, this is our third year of it, it's our third administration, you know, so there's been a lot of turnover at the school, you know, from when this thing got implemented. Now, with this, with the way that the new contract is written, having it, like you said, having a single point of contact as opposed to, you know, the middle school principal, the high school principal, he's got his point of contact at the school, he's got his point of contact with the police department, I 100% agree that that will clear things up as far as that stuff's concerned.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Ross?
Yes, sir.
You said there's 292 calls as of right now, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mike, I got two questions here, actually, kind of segues into three, but I'll keep one down to two. Before the SRO position came up at the school, do you have any numbers as to how many calls were made to the school before he came on unit?
I don't have that, that's pre-Zerker, and the way that call for services and case files were created prior to our new system is murky at best, but I can say with absolute certainty, when I was a cop here in 2012, you know, the chief of police and the captain spent a ton of time at the school, you know, during the Monday through Thursday regular work week, those guys were up there dealing with the school a ton. Even when Jen was here, prior to my arrival, I know she spent a ton of time up there, as well as Mike, Bob Evans, you know, all those guys in the administrative positions, they have spent a ton of time at the school because we didn't have the SRO. And even in our short span, the three years that we've done it, you can see an uptick in the calls for service. I mean, they're calling us more for incidents that are happening up at the school, whether it's drugs, fights, bullying, truancy, you know, we're getting called up there more and more. They're utilizing us, but the calls are severe enough that they require a law enforcement response, and it's not stuff that they can just handle up there themselves. I mean, some of it is, but they're still calling us for serious incidents that are going on there, so it's, to me, it's an absolute necessity.
Okay, and the second part is, and I talked with the SRO earlier today, there's two, to me, there's two phases of the tension up there. Have those numbers, as far as the tension, gone down?
I guess I don't understand what you're saying, what you're asking, say it again.
When they have the two, there's two phases of the tension when they get in trouble. Maybe he could answer that question a little bit more if he wants to come up.
Go ahead, Larry.
The tension that they have up there, when we went to school, it was called attention. I forgot the words they use nowadays for these two phases of it up to school. In your words, in a good way... In your words, in a good way, bad way, whatever you want to do, are those numbers up? Are they down? Or have they just evened out? What is showing on that one?
Well, since I started up there now, the school has their discipline matrix that they work with, and with myself, when there's a time, if there's a violation of the law, they'll pull me in. A majority of the time, when I'm pulled in to any types of things going on in the school, I've got a lot of discretion, and we mediate things. Detention, it actually just started up again in the middle school, Manly, this year, and it's, a lot of the issues are just for, like, skipping class. We have not seen any hard use of detention lately.
All right. Thank you, sir.
And also, one thing that we need to keep in mind is that you had like 290 some calls since the beginning of this year, that your time isn't completely set at answering calls. Each call generates a number of paperwork, so you're spending a lot of time with paperwork and follow-up as well?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
What's the difference between the, Chief, you said 404 calls, then 292 calls that you responded to?
Yep.
Tell me the difference there, please.
So 404 is, that's what, that's the amount of calls Thomas has been involved in since the start of the school year. He's only worked the school. 404, 112 of those, he initiated himself. He went out, he stopped a car. He didn't get called to something. He went and did it. The other 292, he was asked to come to.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
Again, I want to reiterate what I hear and people I've talked to about your work at the school. You are to be commended for the work you do. You're very well-liked, you're very well-respected, and it's a green light for the city, if you will. It's a good light on the city. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
So one last question for you, Chief. In the contract, if approved by council, under the duty hours and duty location, it says school day not to exceed 40 hours per week. And we've talked about this, that if council approves this contract, it's important to keep a close look on that 40 hours a week is what they're paying for, that's what they get. So it wouldn't be expecting to see any overtime associated with SRO's responsibilities at the school.
Sounds good. I mean, obviously, with it written into the contract the way it is now, I think it's more dialed in than it has been in the past, but I think the reality here is that we have to understand that he's taking, like we said, 292 calls for service a year, and there's investigations, there's courts, you know, there's things of that nature. So obviously, we monitor it and stay on top of it, and with the scheduled hours, that's the real thing that I like about it, is it's specific to 7:30 to 4:30, Monday through Thursday, and that gives us that four hours of wiggle time each week, you know? And we are a two-week pay period. We don't accrue overtime until the 86 hour, so theoretically, overtime should not be an issue moving forward.
And we will take measures to keep track of the difference.
Right.
Some of the questions I was asked, I wasn't able to answer because we don't have that data, so thanks for sharing a lot of that. It sounds like this contract is all or nothing, that $46,000 for what they want, or there's nothing else on the table. I hope we are setting a precedence, because I'll remind you that the county raised over 100% what we asked for, and then they raised it again the very next year. So I hope by doing this, we are setting a precedence and others follow us.
Council, have you had a chance to review the contract, the changes in the contract? And are you satisfied that you understand the changes, proposed changes? And are you ready to vote?
I'm ready.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Chief Norton. Officer McMillan, appreciate your input. Ms. T, would you call the roll, please?
Gary Telkamp?
Yes.
Linda Varval?
Yes.
Hal Glanville?
Yes.
Bill Lukens?
Yes.
JR Huddleston?
Yes.
Larry Pratt?
Yes.
Thank you.
The motion passes. Onto new business item, yeah.
Keep up the good work, guys, and be safe.
Can I get a motion to approve the conditional development agreement with Jason and Ivy Getch?
Make a motion to approve the conditional development agreement with Jason and Ivy Getch, establishing requirements for the future development of lot, of three lots on South Garden Street.
Second. So on your agenda tonight, you'll see that this particular agenda item precedes an approval of a plat. So they go hand in hand. The conditional replat agreement ensures that any utility services that need to be provided on those three lots will in fact be provided. In the past, we've had situations where council has approved a plat, and our attorneys tell us, once the plat is approved by council, there's no way for us to withhold a signature to make sure that stipulations or utilities are completed on those lots. So this conditional agreement is an agreement between the developer, the property owner, and the city about the expectations of what's going to happen on those lots. So it's important to understand that you need to approve the development agreement first, and Jason and Ivy, thank you for being patient with us to get through this agreement. They've already signed it twice because there were some changes to it, and I printed the wrong copy, and we had a B where we should have had a C. They signed that tonight. So they have signed the agreement that's in front of you. The other thing, on the first page of it, the copy that you have, and the first sentence, conditional agreement, replat agreement entered into as of fifth day of April. The one that's actually been signed is the fifth day of May. If you approve this, then the expectation is that you'll also approve the next agenda item of the plat. And this assures the city that all the necessary utilities will be installed per our ordinances. Jason, Ivy, anything you'd like to add?
Only if you guys have questions.
Say again?
If you guys have any questions.
Okay. Do you have any questions, um?
Uh-uh.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Onto new business item G. Can I get a motion to approve a plat of Lot A, B, and C of Block 5?
I make a motion to approve a plat of Lot A, Lot B, and Lot C of Block 5, Stewart's second addition to the town, now city of Hot Springs, Fall River County, South Dakota, formerly Guest Track and GT Lot 2 and GT Lot 3.
Second. Deborah's not with us tonight, but this has been through P and Z, and P and Z is recommending approval of this plat. Any questions? This is exciting.
I know. I feel like clapping for this one.
Finally.
We'll see how the vote goes. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Can I get a motion for new business item H? Set a public hearing on Monday, June 2nd at 7:10 p.m.
Make a motion to set a public hearing on Monday, June 2nd at 7:10 p.m. for the special sale alcoholic beverage license applications from the Hot Springs Rotary Club for the Chamber of Commerce 2025 concert series events to be held on June 7 and 21, July 19, 2025, and the Fourth of July dance event on July 3 at Centennial Park, 275 North Garden Street.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Can I get a motion for new business item I? Set a public hearing on Monday, June 2nd, 2025 at 7:20 p.m.
Make a motion to set a public hearing on Monday, June 2nd, 2025 at 7:20 p.m. to review an application for a use permit on review for an accessory apartment at 706 Jennings Avenue by Lisa Cruz.
Second.
Discussion.
This is what you were talking about behind, this is what you were talking about behind there. Okay.
Yeah, you were asking where it was.
Right.
And I shared the, yep.
Anyone else?
Now, the use on review permit, I guess I've asked this question before. We've given them out before. Do we need to use one as an example? They're supposed to fix up their apartment. They didn't. If, do we need to go, you know, keep an eye on these things and make sure they're doing what they're saying they're doing? Or we just sit back and say, okay, great, we'll see you in a year?
For this particular use, if they meet the requirements, it's given to that person for as long as they use it, for that purpose, as long as they stay within the requirements. So there's nothing to follow up and look at. It either is built through the proper fire code, has the proper entrances and exits, and you have the public hearing, and you give them the opportunity. You don't go check and make sure that anything's being done.
Okay.
For this particular use permitted on review.
For this particular one. Right. Okay, I'm done.
Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Can I get a motion on new business item J? Set a public hearing on Monday, June 2nd, 2025 at 7:30 p.m.
Make a motion to set a public hearing on Monday, June 2nd, 2025 at 7:30 p.m. to consider the proposed amendments, the zoning of Title 15, land usage, Chapter 154 subdivisions, and Chapter 155 zoning.
Second. Discussion.
It's not as easy to change these ordinance, so we have to have public hearings. So you just are finishing up the public hearings and the readings of ordinances to change it related to cannabis, and we're having another one, and it sounds like there's going to be a couple changes as soon as we get these changes done too, so more to come.
Anyone? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Can I get a motion on new business item K? An automatic budget supplement to the general fund police department.
I make a motion to approve an automatic budget supplement to General Fund Police Department. $3,000, 2101-42100-42700 for reimbursement of expenses related to the law enforcement tactical training, equipment, supplies, project, reimbursement revenue received from Edward Byrne Memorial, JAG, JAG, grant funding number 202-BJAG-09-2, number 3.
Discussion.
Do you think I make those numbers up to make you guys read them up? It's hard to keep track, but they mean something.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. And our final new business item. Can I get a motion on new business item L? A travel training request from wastewater foreman, Jason Correll.
I make a motion for, to approve the travel train request from wastewater foreman, Jason Correll, to travel to and from Grand Island, Nebraska, to pick up valves not available locally in order to save approximately $7,000 in shipping costs on May 1st, 2025.
Second.
Discussion. Did we already see the paperwork on this? Are we just cleaning something up? I don't see any paperwork.
You mean like a claim to pay for it?
I thought we had talked about this prior before.
There's a travel training request, and it is after the fact.
Okay.
But we haven't paid the bill yet for the expenses.
Then I didn't get one.
Oh. Oh. Did you guys?
Give me yours, Hal.
My packet has one. Okay.
Okay.
Sorry about that, Larry.
I'm good.
Whoops.
So we paid $200 instead of $7,000 for shipping.
So I take it that trip was safe and he's back home with the equipment?
As far as I know.
Okay.
I would hope I would have heard something if he wasn't back safe.
Yeah.
Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Onto committee reports. First committee report, administrative and finance, JR.
Next admin finance will be May 12th, 1 o'clock here at the Mueller Civic Center. All are welcome to attend.
Thank you. Airport advisory, Gary?
Airport advisory committee met on Thursday, May 1st at 8:30 a.m. at the airport. Members present, Rashane Miller and Petra Wilson. Employees, airport manager, Ivan Venner. City administrator, Jacqueline Kelsey. Public works engineering, utilities director, Tracy Bastian. KLJ, Charlie Baker. Elected officials, Alderman Gary Telkamp, Alderman William Lukens, Mayor Bob Nelson. Airport tenants, Ian Bell. Members of the public, Josh Scott. The agenda was approved as written. There were no communications from the public. I think it's pronounced Ian Bell. Introduced himself and advised that he has purchased the skydiving business from Colin Potter. Airport manager updates, monthly fuel sales for April were 782.2 gallons. There were 55 flight operations. Patrick advises there were one balloon launch, zero landings. Ivan has trimmed the trees that were encroaching the flight path for runway 24. Ivan reports that the Colorado Pilots Association is anticipating 18 planes for the June 13th event, and he has arranged ground transportation for them. Airport observations with opportunities for improvement, none. Old business. AWAS 3 is moving forward and everything is on schedule. Charlie Baker remains optimistic that the federal funding will come through. Ivan said that the city has two 24-inch augers that can be used to create a French drain of source between the hangar approaches on west elevation of the tee hangers to assist with some of the drainage issues. This will be addressed when time permits. New business. Patrick Wilson said that the balloon festival people are going to be meeting with the Chamber of Commerce on May 7th at 11 o'clock at the chamber office, and would like to have a representative from the airport advisory committee in attendance. Shane Miller said that he could be available and will attend the meeting. Charlie Baker of KLJ presented a spreadsheet on 10-year capital improvements program. Our next meeting is June 5th, 2025 at 8:30 a.m. We adjourned at 9:57 a.m. Any questions?
I have a question about the drainage, as I remember that being an issue before we closed out with the contractors, and I thought that drainage was to be addressed before we did the project closeout, but it sounds like it's an ongoing issue.
It's an ongoing issue.
And so now we're addressing it? Charlie was there, though, for that meeting, and he didn't say?
The slopes and everything are per the design. The reason it's not draining is because we've had no rain, and so the grass seed hasn't taken, and therefore, the ground is pretty hard-packed, and it tends, if we do get a little bit of moisture, it tends to puddle and potentially run onto the apron. So until we get good grass, like we've got on the tee hangers next to it, these French drains should take care of the drainage issue.
Do we have an issue with the seeds washing away? Are we going to have to reseed?
Hard to say that turkeys are not helping, so.
Don't feed them.
Thank you.
Don't feed the turkeys.
So you got to quit feeding the turkeys.
Yeah. I've heard that.
They are not allowed at the airport. Didn't anyone tell them?
Thank you, Gary. Ms. T, did you catch that JR left or?
I did, but he was gone less than five minutes, so he's good.
I have another question about the French drain. Yours, the auger drills straight down. You just drill and hold straight down? That's not a French drain. That's a hole.
Well, it might have been a poor choice of words on my part, and.
The hole was rocks in it.
Down, yeah, that's the plan, auger down, and then fill with some river rock, and hopefully the water will go into there and disperse. And so I guess I call them French drain, if that's improper word, I apologize for that.
No, I just wanted to clarify that, what it was. Thank you.
Travis is not with us. Travis is not with us. Deborah's not with us. Evans Plunge Advisory, Linda?
The next Evans Plunge Advisory Committee will meet Thursday, May 8th, 2025, at noon at the Evans Plunge.
Thank you. Parks Recreation and Beautification, Larry, Linda?
Next meeting will be here at the Mueller Center, Wednesday, the 7th at 2 p.m. Everyone is invited.
Thank you. Planning zoning? Deborah's not with us. Safety, Bill, JR?
Public safety committee met Thursday, May 1st, 1 p.m. here at the Mueller Civic Center. In attendance, members present, Alderman Bill Lukens, Alderman JR Huddleston, Alderman Gary Tellkamp, Mayor Bob Nelson, city administrator Jacqueline Kelsey, Captain Phil Shively, and safety coordinator Lori Scherrard. Members of the public were none. Adoption of the agenda was adopted as published. Communications from the public, none. Update from the police department, none. Old business, review status of action item list, fuels reduction education. The committee reviewed and selected two resources to be posted on the city website regarding protecting homes and structures from wildfires. Item B, disaster-related facility use agreements. Agreements are being worked and will be on a future council agenda for approval. New business, the committee renewed potential questions for the meeting with the Black Hills Energy regarding their wildfire plan. Adjournment was at 1:46 p.m. Set it to your questions or corrections.
Bill, anything you'd like to add?
No additions.
Do you know which facility use agreements need to be on future agendas? Is there a list of them?
Yeah, Jacqueline's working on those, updating the Butler Park, even though it's not due until September. Go ahead and do it now, as well as agreement with South Dakota Wildland Fire for the use of the Mueller Center, and still waiting to get some feedback from the Red Cross on the use of the Mueller Center for shelter.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you. Public Works, Bill, Hal?
Public Works met on April 29th at 1 p.m. here at the Mueller Center. Members present, work council members, Bill Lukens, Al Glanville, Gary Tellkamp, Mayor Bob Nelson, city administrator Jacqueline Kelsey, public works engineer Tracy Bastian, wire department foreman Sean Heil, street department representative Kurt Bilbrey, Wastewater foreman Jason Correll. Members of the public present were Alan Stevens, Bob Ingretson, and Don Olsted. Communications from the public, Bob Ingretson. Am I pronouncing that right?
Ingretson.
Close enough?
Yep.
Good. About the following items to the committee, a broken curb at 1746 Washington. The issue will be assessed. Jennings Avenue at the fire station needs drainage improvement and pavement if possible. The drainage issue will be reviewed by streets of maintenance to determine if anything can be done. The paving requests will be reviewed and determined if it should be recluded in the existing list of areas needing service treatment. Fire hydrant at University in Chicago. The concern stated that the breakaway flange is too high above grade and presents a hazard if struck by a vehicle. Typical insulation standards call for a minimum of two and a maximum of six inches cleaner from finished grade. The hydrant of concern is approximately seven inches from finished grade to the center of the flange. Though the insulation exceeds some manufacturers' recommended cleaners to grade by just over an inch, the insulation is not in violation of NFPA 24, insulation of private fire main, which is referenced on the International Fire Code and adopted as part of the International Building Code adopted by the city. As such, insulation considered adequate and will not be replaced. Alan Stevens shared concerns regarding letters sent to food preparation businesses regarding grease traps. He feels proper grease trap, pre-2009, business is cost prohibitive, and believes grease abatement is more effective than grease traps. He stated that according to a conversation he had with the state funding inspector's office, they are willing to work with the establishment. This information will be reviewed to determine if any action should be taken by the city. Under old business, the value drainage, public works engineers working on a plant profile, hoping for a bid opening in June. At 8:41 Alma Street, the late fee review had a third review as additional concerns have been reviewed, the committee is voiding the previous recommendation to waive late fees. New business, Title V, Chapter 501, period 06, revision. The committee, along with the members of the public present, discussed a proposed revision to the ordinance. The consensus was to revise the ordinance to include the following to provide the necessary clarification. City is responsible for the meter slash meter yoke, including yoke connections. Add in definitions, meter yoke assembly. The north end of the suspended sidewalk revision, the committee reviewed communications between the mayor and ISG regarding the northernmost suspended sidewalk tower, which blocks access to the on-grade sidewalk extending north, and potential resolutions for like contiguous access between the two sidewalk systems. ISG has offered to pay up to $10,000 of the cost to extend this expanded sidewalk. This would leave the remainder of the project, which would be approximately $24,678.80 for the city to cover. Conversations are continuing with ISG. The first decision council needs to make is do we want the issue corrected, and if so, what are we willing to extend to correct it? The committee recommends to the council, the city takes steps to connect the sidewalk system. Number three, all other agenda items will move to May 27th agenda because of time constraints. There were no departmental summaries or updates. The next meeting will be May 27th, 1 o'clock here at the Mueller Center, and everyone is invited.
Any questions?
I have a comment and a question. I'd raised concerns with the state about sidewalk in front of H&R Block, and they came down and met with you and me, and we looked at the issue, but I have not heard anything back. And I'm wondering, has Public Works heard anything that they were repaired that situation there, or what they did? They did agree there was an issue there, but I have not heard if it would have been repaired or not.
Yeah, that hasn't been discussed at Public Works, so I need to follow up on that email. You had mentioned that we got one from ISG with DOT, and they were looking at what they believed would be the right solution for it. But that hasn't been run through Public Works.
Okay, thanks, bud.
You bet. So what Hal was talking about, anybody that's watched the suspended sidewalk knows that the northmost tower does not meet adequately with the on-grade sidewalk. Been having ongoing conversations with ISG. ISG is the company that designed the sidewalk and managed the overall oversight and construction of it. Since we identified that was a problem late summer, early fall, it took us a while to get to a point where ISG finally responded that they do not feel it was a design problem on their part to end the sidewalk that way. And as Hal had mentioned, we asked ISG to reach out to the contractors that built the sidewalk to give us a cost of the fix. There were two fixes that were discussed. One of them was to put another bump out towards the business side of the highway, which would have meant we would lose a parking spot there, plus also then it would force pedestrians closer to traffic, to traffic, whether they were parking or just normal traffic traveling to the south. Or to cut off another 10 foot of the parapet wall and extend the sidewalk 10 feet north, overhanging the river, and then tie back into the sidewalk. We had told ISG that was the only acceptable solution for the city. DOT has been involved in this conversation, and DOT is of the opinion that the responsibility is not on their designers. It was on ISG to identify how to tie that sidewalk incorrectly. So after we asked ISG to get a quote from the company that would fix the problem, it came back at $34,680, I think, and ISG is offering $10,000 towards that cost. I'm still of the opinion that the city should not be paying anything for that. They're the engineers that we hired to design and manage the project, and they build a sidewalk that on the north end isn't adequate. So we've had a conversation with our attorneys on how we want to proceed with that, so that's still an ongoing discussion. Our attorneys will reach out to DOT and get what information they can from them to help inform their conversation with ISG. But we're still of the opinion that ISG needs to foot the full cost of the sidewalk, and we'll keep you updated as we get to a resolution. But as Bill, or as Hal said, the first decision council needs to make is, do you want it fixed? If you don't, then the discussion is over. We don't spend up to $34,000 to fix it, or do you want it fixed? Recognizing it may be up to $34,000. Depending on how we approach ISG, they may just say, well, if you're not going to take the $10,000, we're not offering anything. Those are the ongoing discussions we need to continue having with them.
That's the way I have an attorney for. Sorry.
I went down there and tried to see where that was, and I left it, drove by it, I didn't.
It's, it's, it's right by it.
Yeah, I didn't see exactly where it is, but is it something that we need to fix? Is it something that needs to be done?
Yes.
It is.
So individually, each of you will need to decide what need means to you. Currently, you cannot, if you're traveling north on the sidewalk and you get to the last tower, there's no way for anyone in a wheelchair or handicapped to get around the tower onto the on-grade sidewalk that continues north from that tower to the Minnetoka Bridge. Likewise, if you're traveling south, you get to that tower, there's no way to get around the tower. So if you feel that there needs to be a nice clean transition from the suspended sidewalk to the on-grade sidewalk, then you would say, yes, it needs to be fixed. If your opinion is, for the majority of people, it's going to work. There's also, in my mind, ADA guidelines. The majority of the project is funded by federal dollars, so the state had to design the road and everything else to federal highway guidelines. And my feeling is that that particular one probably doesn't meet ADA guidelines.
And the people that designed, what's her name?
ISG.
ISG. And they're the general, and they designed it, and they did everything, or we?
They designed it, and we paid them around $420,000 to design, and then managed the construction of the suspended sidewalk.
Are we reasonably comfortable that it's their responsibility?
Oh, absolutely.
I am.
I don't see any reason to, and I'm speaking to Austin out there as well, I don't see any reason to sign a release and let them off the hook for $10,000, their offer. I'd say that we just put them on notice that we're going to go ahead and repair it. They want to get involved in it. They need to get involved in it right now, because we're not going to have discussion afterwards as to what the repairs cost, and whether they are necessary, prudent. And if they don't pull me up, then I think we find some young lawyer that's hungry, let him pursue them on a contingency basis.
I believe we already signed an agreement and acceptance, correct? That's not what we brought before the council to complete and close out the project this year? That wasn't an agreement and acceptance with the promise to not have any other complaints or claims?
I don't understand.
And is that considered an on-grade sidewalk? From the end there, they say the rest of that, if you could get around the pole, the rest of that along that way to Minnetoka is an on-grade sidewalk?
That's what DOT refers to it as? Yes. Hal? To your point, Gary, I think we need to give our attorney an opportunity to talk with DOT.
I agree.
Strengthen his.
Worst-case scenario is worth off $10,000.
$34,000.
Well, $24,000, if we didn't.
Right.
See what I'm saying?
So you hire an attorney, and you go to court, and you hope you win, and you recover your attorney cost. Two, three years down the road, you lose, you don't get any attorney cost, and then the repair itself is north of where it's at now. So there's a risk. But we need to give our attorneys an opportunity to talk with DOT, have a better understanding of the federal highway, you know, criteria, and then be able to talk with ISG to say, okay, you know, here's where we're at. But to just assume that we're done, we're going to pay for it, and we'll figure out in court, I don't think we're at that point yet.
Any further discussion can happen in executive session. This will advise our whole council.
Okay, here we go.
Any further discussion on this can happen in executive session.
Yeah. Well, as I've said before, I'm not going to call for any more executive sessions. Comes back and bites me in the butt.
This one we might need to eventually.
Any further discussion?
All right.
I highly advise.
All right.
With our legal counsel present.
Thank you.
Well, I, for one, I think I need to go down there and visually, or.
I would.
Look at it.
Can I add, it's not just people who were walkers, rolling walkers or chairs, even people who bicycled, or couples working together, couples walking together. It's just, it's wrong.
I think we just need to stick, I think we need to stick to the main topic, because now we're segueing again. Our attorney just advised us to not continue this conversation unless it's an executive session. Exactly. Okay, anything else for Bill or Hal on Public Works? The golf course committee will meet next Monday, May 12th, 6 o'clock at the clubhouse. City administrator's not with us tonight. Misty?
Due to the timing for the annual report and all the work I put into that, you will have your April month-end report at the second meeting in May.
All right. I don't have anything for you tonight, so with that, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.